Let us pray. Jesus God, Lord, thank you for another day. We thank you for your abundance. We thank you for your grace. Please bless this meeting to be productive and to be pleasing in your sight. Bless us this day, Lord, to hold each other with respect and honor and most importantly, kindness. We pray that you're with us. We pray all this in the name of Jesus the Christ, our risen Lord and Savior, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. And Mr. City Attorney, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll turn to council reports and start with Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I wanted to report on two different events, not events, items, events. A tour of Meals on Wheels is a facility that is right around... meaningful for me. You know, they service mostly seniors and right now, you know, they're facing some, you know, federal type of funding restraints. So that makes me very concerned. But it's meaningful because when my mom passed away, my dad was, you know, left at home, couldn't make meals himself. And the only reason why he, we didn't have to place him in a facility is because Meals on Wheels delivered to him in South Carolina. So that allowed him to, you know, be, you know, stay, you know, stay in place, which was really meaningful to me and my family before he passed 18 months later. But he was able to do that at home where he was happy. So anyway, so that's Meals on Wheels. And then the second thing that I would like to report is the producers. And many of us may, maybe not, notice the producers that are on, you know, the side of 80 at the Jack in the Box exit. And so this was the second time that myself and the city manager, members of staff, economic development, we all did a tour of the producers and what they call milk to table. What I love about it is not only can we see that facility, but the trucks that come in, well, so what they say is you could literally go to the store, go to Costco, which is one of their distribution chains, go to Costco, get milk, and within 24 hours before that, that milk could have been in the cow. Like that is the turnaround. There's no storage at the producers. As milk comes in, it goes out within a short period of time. So anyway, that is my report. The reason, Mayor, that I like to attend and go to businesses in Fairfield is because I am, I'm concerned about business retention, not just in my district, but in the city of Fairfield. That is a revenue stream that I want to keep coming in, sales revenue stream, but also they employ us. And so that's something that will always be a passion for me if there's, you know, if there's any type of subcommittee surrounding business retention, I'm signing up. So, thank you, Mayor.
I would put you first in line, and thank you for being an ambassador out there for our businesses. You do make a real effort to go around and do these things, and I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. They missed you, and I had some of the best ice cream that I've ever had in my life. It was so good.
Oh, you were, you were sick. You were sick, sir. Councilman Tonison?
And that's my report.
Okay.
No, I have nothing to report, Mayor. I was pretty, pretty sick the last couple of weeks, and thank you, North Bay. You did a fantastic job.
All right. Councilman Doug?
Yes, Mayor, I don't have anything to report either, as I was out of state on work, so I don't have a report this week. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you, Mayor. So Fairfield, along with every other city in the county, is a part of Capsolano JPA, which is a regional board for homelessness. And so we meet once a month, and myself and Councilmember Doug here are on the two reps for the city of Fairfield. And we come together and we talk about funding for homelessness. And not only does every city sit on that regional board, but also does the county. And county is where all the money, a lot of the money comes down into. And so we had some exciting news. So we got to meet our new executive director, DeShawn Waters. He had just welcomed a baby literally the night before, and he still showed up, and he gave us a presentation and showed us what his priorities and goals were for this committee. We also received an update on the strategic priorities planning and provided input into the umbrella embroidery priorities. And our next Capsolano meeting is at the end of this month, on June 26, at 6:30, and they're held over at the County Event Center, and all are welcome. So it is a public meeting that anyone can attend. Yes, so June is Pride Month, and yesterday we raised a pride flag, and I had the privilege of sharing a few words and reading this year's official proclamation, recognizing Pride Month in the city of Fairfield, and then presenting the proclamation to Will McGarvey, the executive director of the Solano Pride Center. I had councilmembers Tonison and Williams by my side. I wanted to thank them both for showing up and standing up for inclusivity, community, and love. Pride Month is more than just a celebration. It's a powerful reminder of the ongoing fight for visibility, dignity, and equal rights for all LGBTQ+ community. There is still a lot of work to be done, and as I shared yesterday, our differences is what makes us stronger. Happy Pride, everybody. And then this week, I know, is FSUSD's last week of schools. We have a lot of graduations going on, and summer school, summer is starting, so I just wanted to wish all the students a safe and fun summer, and congratulations to all the graduates as they move on to their next adventure, whether vocational or educational. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being out here this evening. It's always a great meeting when the chamber is full, so it's good to see you all here. And I just have a few things. Number one, I wanted to report that the Fairfield Clergy Action Network held our second Fresh Food Festival last Wednesday at David Weir Elementary School. And I want to say thank you to all of the churches that showed up and helped us organize and execute it. And I want to say thank you to Rayleigh's and Safeway and Costco and Walmart and all of the local stores that gave fresh food and vegetables. We served about 300 people in line, and we distributed food to feed over 800 individuals. And so it was a fantastic event. Our homeless services division, Samantha, thank you. We were all out there breaking our backs, moving boxes and giving away food, but this is great food, it's fresh, it's the food that we all eat. So what a blessing. God bless this community through that event, and I really want to say thank you for that. And then I just want to remind everybody of a couple of important meetings we have coming up this month. We're going to be out in the community, as usual, again this month. So tomorrow at 6:00 PM, we have a town hall meeting, HOA event at Rancho Solano over at the clubhouse, 6:00 PM. We're going to be talking about landscape, lighting, and maintenance, and alternatives to the LLMD structure for that neighborhood. And so it's really important, if you know anyone in Rancho, or if you're in Rancho and you want to weigh in on this, this is really the time to show up, tomorrow, 6:00 PM at the clubhouse. And then next Tuesday, we have a town hall, a community meeting slash town hall meeting for Rolling Hills neighborhood on the same topic, again, landscape, lighting, and maintenance districts. And so we're on a tight timeline to get all of the dates satisfied and all of the requirements satisfied. And so it is time to make the move if we want to do this, it's time to do it now. And then we have our listening tour for District Four on Saturday, the 28th, and that is going to be at Rolling Hills Elementary School on Fieldcrest Avenue. So that is, and then we have our canned board meeting, the Clergy Action Network Board Meeting is on the fourth Tuesday of this month, so that's on the 24th of June, 3:00 to 4:30 PM, at the Community Center in the Vista Conference Room. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and to you, Councilman Sandu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick thing to update on. I know one of the things we had talked about a couple of months ago was the idea of potentially maybe expanding our sister city partnership. So I am pleased to share that I did finally have a call actually with the city of Townsville in Australia. The conversation was with the Member of Parliament by the name of Philip Thompson. Quick summary on him, he's a Member of Parliament. Before that, he was in the Army in Australia, deployed to Afghanistan 2009, survived an IED blast, and following that got involved in government in the country. And then finally, he's now a federally elected member there. And overall, the conversation was positive, it opened, and from their perspective, they're interested in seeing how we can collaborate together. One of the, and from the city side, it was, it was nice to have the Assistant to the City Manager, Ms. Aptikar, join, who brought a well-deep knowledge in defense to the conversation. And the city of Townsville, just for everybody to know, it's one of the largest military cities in Australia, similar to the city of Fairfield. And one of the topics we've talked a lot about to help our city is defense, and the two things that tie Australia and America together is AUKUS, the Trilateral Partnership. And one of the thoughts is how could we, at the local level, leverage that to help better our city? So that's kind of what grounded the conversation. We did not really discuss what we would do, how we would do it, when we would do it. So I think that's kind of the next step. So we'd look to, towards you to maybe join a future call.
Sure.
And then at some point to bring that to council, to bring more details and clarity. But overall, it was productive, and from their side, they're open and interested to partner with us as a city. So yeah, that's about it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. That's exciting. As we know, the world is all tied together now, especially when it comes to defense tech and the things that we can share. So I appreciate that. I first just wanted to say, I'm going to report now, that we all know that, I think we all know, that there were a couple fires yesterday, one big one. And I think that our teams, all of our first responders, and especially our fire and police dispatch, all of them, you know, make quick work of that up there. And that is not something that's by accident. They are trained very well. We do, or they do, I like to say the city does, a lot of work, that includes all of us who work here, in making sure that we are doing defensive things before a fire starts. I think that our notifications went out really well, and I just want to say how much I appreciate. And then the all-call was done quickly, and that matters when you have a fire burning. So it showed the extreme, what I think is a professionalism of Team Fairfield. And I just want to thank our, everybody who was involved, and the men and women who were up on the front lines, and then, and also our citizens who reacted pretty darn well when we asked them to evacuate, which nobody wants to do. It was not ugly, and people listened, because we know now that these fires are not anything to be messed with. So congratulations, and thank you for all of everything that you do daily, but especially we see the work then. And then also, you know, those pilots are badasses that dropped that stuff out there. And some lady, my phone was getting blown up, and they were saying, "I don't mind, there's orange stuff all over my stuff now, I just want you to know." I, you know, I'll take it. So again, just thank you. And last week, several of us went to Fairfield High to check out their culinary program. And I can't say anything but wow, just wow. We were served food that you would get at a very expensive restaurant. They, we were served well. The food, everything they make, they make there, the pasta, any sauces that they did. They even had somebody mixiness drinks, not alcoholic drinks, darn it. But anyway, they were making, you know, nice drinks for us to have there, and with their mixologist. And one of the young ladies, she's here in the back, she's going to be the head chef there next year. And her, Roxy's dream is to be a chef. So Roxy, could you just stand up? I'm going to embarrass you. This is Roxy. And just so you know, this program is so good that the head chef this year is going to the Culinary Institute, and that's no joke. That's where you get your, your best chefs. So I'm really excited about it. Also, just to remind my friends down there that went to Armia, that this is Fairfield High, but you know. Yeah, okay, anyway, just...
You're first.
Yeah, Armia. Okay. And then on...
Are you wearing Armia colors too?
They are. I almost, I guess I kind of am. On Saturday, we had down at the Downtown Theater, what was, is called the Glorious Golden Girls. And what is that? They were 20 women, we celebrated, between the ages of 85 to 100-plus, and these are women who still work in Fairfield and Vacaville, or volunteer, you know, do 50 hours. I mean, they run circles around a lot of us, including me. And I was so thankful that staff here helped me with this. We've got certificates for all of them. Their stories were fantastic. And I was able to give Pat Dennis, who does a whole lot of work here in Fairfield, a key to the city, and it was really cool. And then the last thing that I'll report on is that we have another round of young ambassadors for our sister city, which is in Japan, in Nagasaki. And I got to meet them all last night, and this is a fantastic, great group of friendly, really smart, young people that are going to represent all of us. And I was able to pin them off the Fairfield pen, and then, well, Liz set up, she has this, she's our staff person who does all of this. she's our staff person who does all of this, and I so much appreciate, it's just unbelievable work. Anyway, the long and short of it is that we had to do a little chopstick thing, and picking up things, specifically Jelly Bellies, and I did it on my first try, and all of the young people did too, so whatever she asks for us next, we'll do that as well. And that's all I have, and Mr. City Manager.
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that the Measure P Oversight Committee has three seats open. The deadline to apply is Friday, July 11th. There may be some applications in the back. If not, you can email city clerk@fairfield.ca.gov. Also, Planning Commission, there's one seat open, and the deadline to apply for that is next Friday, the 13th of June. And then Landscape Oversight Committee, all seats are filled except for District Two, so we have one seat open, and I don't see the date here, but again, you can email the City Clerk's Office for an application, and I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now we'll turn.
And on the J3, the Landscape Oversight Committee, I just want to reiterate, we were going to, we were going to agendize that at a future.
Yes.
Talk about, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to public comments now, Madam Clerk.
Yes, persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. If you're online to speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature, or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item as determined by the mayor. And I have several cards. Our first speaker is Tim Dowling, to be followed by Elizabeth Harrison.
Hi, Tim.
I want to reframe your comments on the fire yesterday.
I bet you do, go ahead.
I have a view of 200 acres of grassland on the southern boundary of Rancho. Three weeks ago, it went from green to brown, and I contacted the Rancho HOA and told them it's been ungrazed since January. So it is four feet tall, all the way from the entrance to Rancho, all the way to the Waterman Treatment Plant. After a week, nothing happened, so I contacted the fire department. The fire department didn't even want to talk about it, they just referred me to code enforcement, and I've never heard back from code enforcement. So then I called Pam Bertani, and to her credit, she said, "Put it all in an email, and I'll pass it around." She immediately sent the email to Mr. Gasaway, and followed up repeatedly, but I'd like her to send the email that I sent her to all the council members, and the video of the view that was included in that. She sent the email to Bertani, and two weeks, nothing happened, no response to this huge fire danger, until 11 o'clock in the morning this Sunday, I got a phone call from the fire marshal, and he acknowledged, she had not even gone out and looked at it yet. And then later in the evening, I got an email copied from Pam Bertani that Gasaway sent, that said, he acknowledged that no one had gone out in two weeks to look at something that was a huge fire danger in two weeks. You know, all these city employees have cars, somebody could have driven by and even looked at this. It's directly adjacent to the water treatment plant. I think this is dereliction of duty for Gasaway, that he didn't do something about this in two weeks. The fire that we had yesterday burned sixty-two acres that had been grazed. This had not been grazed, and it abuts all the homes at the front end of Rancho Solano. So it's very dangerous, and I think there should be some repercussion to this. And I'd like this put on the, as an agenda item on the City Council, so I can talk more than three minutes to address my concerns about this. The fire yesterday burned sixty-two acres and almost burned forty homes, which is roughly $32 million of homes. It burned right up to their fence line in an area that had been grazed, and the fire was so close to their houses that they, your comment on the fire retardant was because the fire was so imminent to their houses. That's not the norm, that they fire retard houses, the streets and the cars and the homes were all covered in pink. This was, this was a dereliction of duty.
Mr. Dowling, your time is up, and if you can, we will get that, if you want to type it out or send it to us, we'll all have that.
Well, if she sends the email that I've sent her, it covers all this, and it was two weeks ago, so I think something needs to be done about the way the City Council and the City Manager manage the fire risk in this town. That fire yesterday was a miracle they got it out.
Yeah, well, no, it was more than that, Mr. Dowling, but I do, I appreciate what you're saying, and I will talk with both the Fire Chief and the City Manager, okay? I don't like, it's your first amendment right to denigrate people, but I don't appreciate it.
It's a dereliction of duty, it's that simple. It's his job, he makes 200,000 plus a year to do this job, and in two weeks.
Yeah, it is.
And in two weeks, he didn't respond.
Okay, Mr. Dowling, I told you, I'll talk to the City Manager, thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Harrison, to be followed by Phil Stewart.
Hello, good evening, good evening, good evening, some of you I have already met, how are you, board? My name is Elizabeth Harrison, and I am the Vice President of this region, I am with SEIU 1021, and it is my pleasure to speak with you this evening. I wish it was on better terms, however, however, I am here because of the bargaining agreement that is being negotiated right now. And what I am told is that there is a proposal on the table that is zero percent COLA and an increase to the cost in healthcare for the workers. And that be it so, we know that's a nonstarter, I don't know if you guys understand if that's what that is, is do you expect that to actually be? Or is this just, oh, let's just start the conversation here and see where it goes? But we are talking about balancing a budget on the backs of some of the lower-paid workers that you have here in the city. There has got to be someplace else you can balance this budget. You have folks that's been to work all day, look at them, they've been to work all day, they hustling, they bustling, they keeping the city safe. We just got through talking about all the great work that the fire people do, I got a text message on my phone that said evacuate, I don't live in that area anymore, so I still have, I get the text message, but I still got that, somebody had to put that in there. But we're talking about reducing the benefits that they've worked hard for, they've earned those benefits, and they continue to earn them with the hard work that they do for the city. And then we go so far as to say, not only will you not get a COLA, not a dollar, not a dime, but we expect you to furthermore pay more for your healthcare, the healthcare that we know is already on the table by what's-his-name, okay? We've got Trump coming for the healthcare, we've got Newsom coming for the healthcare, and then now we have the City of Fairfield telling these folks who go to work every day all day, that we're going to come for your pocket too. And I mean, I give you one dollar, not one dime to try to help. And so I believe in the last 25 seconds that I have, I believe that the next proposal should be one that is actually something that can be negotiated, something that shows good faith, good faith in bargaining, that you're actually interested in considering the welfare of the folks who you employ, and that you find somewhere in the middle where you can meet, okay? And that's my time.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Next speaker, Phil Stewart, to be followed by Aaron Gaudau.
Just like old times, huh?
Old times, endorsed, almost all of you up there.
Nah, not me.
All right. Good evening, City Council, colleagues, and members of our Fairfield community. My name is Phil Stewart, and I stand before you today on behalf of hard-working members of the Fairfield Employees Association, the FEA Union. We are the backbone of this city, the dedicated public servants who keep Fairfield running smoothly every single day. From maintaining our streets to ensuring public safety, from supporting our schools to serving our residents, we're the heart of this community. And today, we're united in asking for a simple, something simple and something fair, a 10% raise to meet the rising challenges of living and working in California over the next two years. Let me start with the hard truth. The cost of living in California is crushing us. Over the past few years, inflation has driven up the price of everything, housing, groceries, gas, childcare, utilities, you name it. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, California's Consumer Price Index rose by 18% statewide from 2019 to 2023. In Fairfield, where many of us live and raise our families, the reality is even starker. Rent for a modest two-bedroom apartment averages over $2,000 a month, a gallon of gas hovers around $4.65. A trip to the grocery store for a family of four can easily cost 400 or more. Those aren't luxuries, they're the bare necessities to survive. Now let's talk about our wages. Many FEA members earn below the state's average annual wage of $84,400. For context, MIT's Living Wage Calculator estimates that a single adult in California needs to earn $30 per hour, roughly $58,000 a year, to cover basic needs without relying on assistance. For a family with two working adults and two children, that number jumps to $46.38 per hour, per adult, or about $96,470 annually, yet many of us are making far less than that. We're not asking to get rich, we're asking to keep up to afford a decent life in the state we serve. Our current wages without a significant adjustment are losing value every day. Inflation doesn't just nibble at our paychecks, it takes big bites. Since 2022, the California inflation rate has outpaced wage growth for many workers, with prices rising 13%, while wages crept up only 4% statewide. For us in Fairfield, this means we're falling behind, forced to stretch every dollar further to make men's eat, to make ends meet, some of us are working second jobs, cutting back on essentials or dipping into savings if we have any left. This isn't sustainable, it's not fair, it's not right for the people who dedicate their lives to this city, so let's be clear, we're not just numbers on a budget sheet, we're the ones who show up day in, day out to make Fairfield a place we're all plowed to call home. We're the maintenance workers who keep our parks pristine, and administrative staff who ensure our services run smoothly, the public safety employees who protect our neighborhoods, and the countless others who serve behind the scenes. Our work isn't just a job, it's a commitment to our community, but commitment alone doesn't pay the rent or put food on the table. A 10% wage isn't a handout, it's a necessity, it's a step toward closing the gap between our wages and soaring cost of living, it's a recognition of our value to Fairfield and
Wind it up, please.
I am, and an investment in the future of this city. Studies show that fair wages lead to better employee retention, higher productivity, and stronger communities. When we're paid, we're worth, we can focus on doing our best instead of worrying about how to afford the next bill. And when we spend our hard-earned money in Fairfield's businesses, we boost the local economy, creating a ripple effect. Hold on a second. To the city leadership, I say this, you have the power to do what's right, you have the chance to show that Fairfield values its workers, not just in words, but in action. A 10% raise over the next two years is a reasonable request when you consider the economic pressures that we face, and the below-average wages that many of us earn in one of the most expensive states in the nation. We're not asking for special treatment, we're not asking, we're asking for fairness, for respect, and for a wage that reflects the reality of living in California. To my fellow FEA members, I say stand tall, your work matters, your voice matters, together we are unstoppable, let's keep fighting, not just for ourselves, but for our families, coworkers, and future of our community. And to the people of Fairfield, we ask you to support your neighbors, your friends, your fellow residents. When we succeed, Fairfield succeeds, a well-paid workforce means a stronger, vibrant city for all of us.
I got to cut you off.
In closing, I urge the city to act boldly and act now, approve a 10% raise for the FEA Union, show us that our sacrifices, our dedication, our labor are valued, let's build a Fairfield where every worker can afford to live with dignity, where our wages keep pace with the cost of living, and where our contributions are recognized as the foundation of this great city. Today, we can make that vision a reality. Thank you.
Next is Aaron Gaudau, to be followed by Matthew Kett.
Evening, y'all.
Hi, Aaron, do you see that timer in front of you?
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, the timer?
Okay.
Okay, good evening. My name is Aaron Gaudau, I'm a proud Public Works Inspector for the City of Fairfield, here tonight on behalf of the Fairfield Employees Association. Every day, my colleagues and I are out in the field making sure that city projects are built right, safely, to code, on time, and under budget. We don't just inspect, we prevent costly mistakes, we protect the public safety, and ensure taxpayers are getting every dollar's worth. We're fighting for the city's interests every step of the way. So it's hard to understand how proposals like quadrupling our medical costs, removing a paid holiday, and offering zero cost-of-living adjustment can be seen as fair or reasonable. It's all taking from us. These concessions would hit working families hard, like mine, and all of us in here, they got families, I mean, we show up for this paycheck, for these benefits, and to do a good job, especially when the same people keeping Fairfield moving forward behind the scenes. We are those people. We don't sit behind desks all day, we're out in the heat, the cold, during emergencies, managing projects, ensuring infrastructure is built to last, and city investments are protected. That's not just work, it's value, and it saves Fairfield money every single day. We're not asking for special treatment, we're asking for fairness, because what's being proposed feels like we're being asked to sacrifice more than our share again, even while we're delivering more than what's expected. Please recognize the work we do, let's move forward with a contract that reflects the respect and fairness every employee in this city deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Matthew Kett, to be followed by James Fry.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Matthew Kett, and I also am a Public Works Inspector. I'm here on behalf of the Fairfield Employees Association. I want to speak plainly and with respect about the direction of the contract negotiations. As it stands, the proposed concessions, quadrupling our medical coverage's costs, removing a paid holiday, and offering zero cost-of-living adjustments are not just difficult asks, they're fundamentally unfair to the people that keep this city running. FEA members are the backbone of Fairfield. We maintain your streets, care for your parks, process your permits, respond to emergencies, and provide services that make the city livable and exceptional. We all do this with pride and professionalism, even as the cost of living continues to climb. To suggest that we shoulder these unreasonable cuts, especially while we deliver unmatched service day in and day out, sends a message that our work is not valued. That message is disheartening and unsustainable for a workplace morale. We understand the need for a fiscal responsibility, and we've always been willing to work collaboratively. But fairness must be the foundation of any agreement. We ask you to recognize our essential contributions and approach these negotiations with equity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is James Fry, to be followed by Will Spreg.
My name is James Fry, I'm an instrument technician at Waterman Treatment Plant. Every day, I make decisions that affect our operations, as do my colleagues. We keep the water on, we make a high-purity product that is critical for important companies such as Anheuser-Busch to exist in our community, and most importantly, we ensure safe drinking water for Fairfield residents. We are being offered a payment con- We are being offered a payment contract that is, for all intents and purposes, a pay cut. A cost-of-living adjustment of 0% for the next three years is below the rate of inflation and therefore a pay cut. Increasing our share of costs for health insurance from 5% to 20% is a pay cut. That is hundreds of dollars less per month in our pockets, and for some people, it's over $1,000 less in their pocket per month. So, Mr. Gasaway, you came to our facility in 2023 to discuss budget. You gave us a presentation; you stated that cutting employee pay does not save money in the long run. So I'm here asking what has changed? Was that statement ever true? And why is it acceptable now? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Will Sprague.
Hi, Will.
Hi, Ms. Moy. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your time this evening. I'm Will Sprague. I come from Solano Superior Court and also serve as the chapter president for our union. I come to stand in solidarity with our fellow brothers and sisters at the FEA and to outright reject the appalling proposals that the city has brought forth. It is a slap in the face to the employees who keep this city running to propose a 0% increase over three years. With rising inflation, that is a pay cut. It is a slap in the face to suggest tripling the healthcare premiums, which you shily backed away from quadrupling the healthcare premiums. It's a slap in the face to suggest eliminating a holiday is an appropriate course of action, and it is a slap in the face to eliminate sick leave payout for staff that die on the job. So my question, or rather, my challenge to the members of the City Council is to find some other way to do this. We understand times are difficult. I believe with the exceptional people we have in this room and the skills that you all possess, you are capable of bringing something more effective, more persuasive, more humane to the table. I believe there is more to our City Council than what we've been allowed to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other speaker cards. Did anyone else wish to speak? Okay, and there are no hands raised online.
Okay, sure. We'll just hold on here while they all exit the chamber. All right, Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar, please.
Okay, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
All right. Do we have any public comments on this?
I do not. Did anyone wish to speak on the consent calendar? Don't have anyone online at all.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. City Attorney, since I wasn't here last night, am I, sorry, last meeting, am I, I could vote on consent but not on agenda? I missed two.
You mean the minutes?
The minutes.
If it goes 7-0, I don't think it matters. If it becomes 4-3, we'll come back and discuss it.
Well, let's challenge him then. Let's see who's got, just kidding. Is that a motion, Councilman?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous, Madam Clerk. And so now, we're going to turn to new business.
New business. Item K1, Consultant Services Agreement for a New Downtown Fairfield Property-Based Improvement District or Community Benefit Improvement District. Consideration of a Consultant Services Agreement with New City America Incorporated for investigation of and potential formation of a new downtown Fairfield Property-Based Improvement District or Community Benefit Improvement District. And our presenter is David Zellers, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to make this presentation and introduce you to Marco Lemandri, who's going to come up in a moment. We are seeking your direction tonight and hopefully your enthusiastic thumbs up as we begin to write the next chapter of downtown Fairfield's revitalization. Over the past several months, at the initiation of our Assistant City Manager, we began a conversation with Marco and his organization about utilizing their services and the methodology that Marco will describe to help us work with our community and identify the potential impacts of creating a new improvement district in our downtown that will help us sustain the great investments that the city has made in recent years and support the new businesses that are coming in right now. I just today ate at one of our new restaurants downtown, El Potayo, which moved in from the county. They did a lovely job. The building they moved into, it's homey; it's just great; they have wonderful food. So again, we're continuing to see good things. We know that next chapter is within reach, and we hope through this work that Marco's going to describe to you, we'll have the resources to bring together the community and make that happen. So allow me to turn this over to Marco and for him to tell you about himself and his organization and share some of the impacts that they have been able to make in other cities over the years and the almost now 100 districts they've helped create around the country. Marco?
Thank you, Marco Lemandri, President of New City America. It's a family-owned business. My wife and I own this business; we've owned it for 30 years. And it's great to see the sign, because a lot of downtowns all throughout the country do not have these signs. They're pretty frequent in California, but they really reflect the town center of every town. And I did a little bit of reading. I'll give you a little bit of background first. So we started in San Diego, and I moved into a business improvement district, one of the merchant business improvement districts that was formed under the 1965 Act. And as typical, what happens in a lot of these organizations is people called an emergency meeting because there's a public works project, and the town center basically collapsed because the construction company went bankrupt, so people could not get in and out of the business district. So they call a meeting, and it's a critical meeting in 1987, 1988. And so I told my wife, we're a food manufacturer; we had about 30 employees. And I said, "I'm going to go find out what's going on at this meeting." And I came back. She said, "So what happened?" I said, "Well, a lot of things, but now I'm the president." So that's how I got involved in this. I had no intention of becoming a president. We closed our food manufacturing company in about 1993. We had five kids. San Diego went through a pretty severe recession in 1993. It completely dismantled its aerospace industry, which had been built up during World War II, and the first thing that gets hit when there's a lot of layoffs are restaurants and food service facilities. So I said, "What do I know how to do?" And one thing I knew how to do, being the president of this volunteer organization, is I knew how to deal with business and property owners. So I said, "Well, why don't I turn this into a business?" So my wife got into real estate and taught me how to use a computer in 1993, 1994. And then I just started forming districts. First one was in West Hollywood in Los Angeles in 1995. Thirty years later, we formed 98 districts, and we'll form our 100th district by this July. Looks like 101 by August. So what the company does is, since this is such a specialized field, we work with, thank you, I have to put on my glasses for this, so. We form districts; we manage districts; and we also consult with districts. So the districts that were currently functioning throughout the country, formed through New City America, have generated $120 million per year in terms of ongoing assessments. Being based in San Diego, we're not far from Fairfield. It's an easy flight up here. I flew up late this morning and enjoyed the drive, and were of the belief that the 75-year cycle, and it looks like probably the largest employer clearly, is Solano County. And what happened during COVID, I don't know, but I know that a lot of county employees, city employees, large office employees stopped coming to work because of COVID. If you guys know the financial district in San Francisco, north of Market Street by the Embarcadero, the historic district, I did that district, formed that district in July 2019. They had probably a 2% to 3% vacancy rate in the financial district, 400,000 people a day using BART to get to the financial district, like 180 departures from the Embarcadero Station. And formed the district, it was rolling fine. March 2020 hits, and the vacancy rate just skyrockets. And a lot of our downtowns have not come back, and a lot of them won't come back. So the key thing is to try to make downtowns, they're not going to become large centers of office buildings anymore. I don't see anybody building Class A office buildings for the foreseeable future. There's a lot of absorption in the United States that has to occur. But what will the downtowns become? And to me, they're going to become downtown neighborhoods, where mixed-use residential will allow the downtowns to survive and to thrive. So the, there are five things that I had to figure out in speaking in multiple locations in the course of the last 30 years. We had to come up with a standard, and this is something my wife hammered me on, and said, "You have to come up with something that's simple, that is explainable to people, and you can use it the same time over and over again, so it's consistent." The first thing is you have to have a place. And I just had dinner in your downtown; it's clear you have a place. You have the brand-new sidewalks extended. I'm assuming that that might have been a roadway at one point, but it looks like you've widened the sidewalks, which is completely great that you do that, because people are into walkability. And one of the best phrases I've heard for walkable places is, the common denominator for a walkable place is hip. If you go to Little Italy in downtown San Diego, if you've ever seen it before, there's Gaslamp in Little Italy. I was the one that formed the multiple districts in Little Italy. We've managed it since 1995. It has surpassed the Gaslamp District now in terms of activity. We had 13 restaurants when we started; now we have 85. We didn't lose one during COVID. So the place is really important, and part of Little Italy's moniker is a hip and happening district. So what combines people a lot, and I've seen this in Little Italy, is hip is relevant to young people, and it's also relevant to seniors who have hip replacement surgery. So you have something that is relevant to both parties. And that's what's really created Little Italy, is we have about 8,000 new units, 10,000 new residents. And one of the key things that I learned, and I never thought I'd be doing, is we built a dog park, because when we first started in Little Italy, we had 20 dogs. We have over 2,000 dog licenses. People that live in urban areas have dogs. Kids have grown up; they want to move to a smaller area; they have dogs. You've got to anticipate that. The second thing is you have to have sustainable revenues. The sustainable revenues are key. I know that you had previously a merchant-based bid that generated about $30,000, and then it got transferred to the Main Street Organization, which basically then was taken over by the city. $30,000 is a small amount of money. It's very difficult to do anything with $30,000 in a downtown. California has two different laws. One is the Property Business Improvement District, which means property owners paying to the district. And the question I would say, you know, what is the county's inclination to support such an effort, since they're the largest single property owner on Texas Street in downtown? So you need to have the sustainable revenues. It can't be always going to the city or going to businesses and having your hand out. So the third thing you need is, once you have the place and you have the sustainable revenues, you need to manage it on an entrepreneurial level. Our assessments in Little Italy, property assessments, are about $1.5 million; our annual budget's over $3 million, because we're really entrepreneurial, believe that all events must pay for themselves, did a lot of public spaces. We've created seven public spaces and raised money in that entire process. Fourth issue that you have to deal with is politics and timing. And I've been in plenty of places, mostly LA, where I've done districts, and it got to the endpoint, and the new City Council person that took over said, "I don't really like this, so we're going to stop the process," even though the balloting supported the formation of the district. So the politics and timing are really important, because if City Councils, city managers, mayors, et cetera, believe that downtown is the heart and the core of any city, they will all have a stake in making that happen. It does not happen by itself. It has to be really driven in a lot of ways. And lastly, you have to manage in the real world. What's the real world of COVID? When COVID happened and businesses were closed and only 25% people were allowed into restaurants, you had to maneuver very, very quickly. And we were able to do that in the process. We didn't lose any restaurants. And now Little Italy's got 18 maintenance workers, nine ornamental and landscaping employees. We've done so many different things in Little Italy and really made it into the largest Little Italy in the country in the course of 20 years, when there's only about five left in the country. Next, examples of the special benefits. What would we be talking about? The state constitution is very clear that you cannot create property assessment districts without property owners deriving a special benefit. What is a special benefit? It are those services over and above what the city is currently providing. If the city's picking up trash three times a week, but you need it down five times a week, the three times a week would be a general benefit by the city; the extra two would be an obligation of the property owners, because it's over and above what the city's currently providing. So that's the key thing. And some of the services that you can provide, most cities do not do sidewalk sweeping or gutter sweeping on an ongoing basis. Steam cleaning, enhanced trash or bulky item removal, dealing with graffiti within 24 hours, and responding to illegal encampments. I didn't notice any here, but I'm from San Diego in Southern California. Trust me, I've seen plenty of encampments. Did 11 districts in Oakland and seen plenty of encampments in Oakland, too, and in San Francisco. Also, you can fund parking management in the event that it gets too crowded. You can always use revenues in order to manage the parking and provide a valet service. You can also do enhanced lighting, decorative lighting. There is now lighting systems that go streetlight to streetlight, that you can change the colors on your phone, up to 16 different colors. So for Valentine's Day, they're red; for Christmas, they're red and green; for Mother's Day and St. Patrick's Day, they can be green, any colors at all. But the colors really add a lot of enhancement. You can also create demand on current properties, business attraction, and promotion of mixed-use development. So I'm not sure what the cost of land is in downtown Fairfield at this point, but people are still looking for opportunities to develop. And they're going to look at a city where the land is not expensive and that you can have a development services department that can expedite the type of development that you want to see. To me, any future development that's going to occur, particularly in the state of California, is going to be mixed-use. Ground floor retail, three to four stories above it, unless you have these height limits that prevent that. You also can fund beautification and decorations, maintenance, planting, watering of the plants. Nothing attracts people better than beautification, and you live in a great environment, far more than Southern California, because you actually get water up here. You have rain, and we don't really have a lot of rain in Southern California, so we have to do a lot of that work ourselves. You can fund district identity, which is marketing promotion, public relations, district branding for festivals, events, wayfinds, signage, et cetera. And then you can also fund public space development. It's not something that we're really good at in the state of California, is public space development. We have some incredible opportunities for public space, and we don't really have them. And public space development doesn't have to be a park. It could just be a hardscape with benches or tables, chairs, and umbrellas where people can just sit, and they can sit in a downtown and not have to pay for something, which is really important, particularly if people have kids and the kids want to run around while the parents are just talking. The summation of the preliminary steps are in July. If the council sees it fit to fund this contract over the four-month period, we will meet with city staff, and then we'd meet with the key downtown stakeholders, explain what the process is of doing the study, because this is a four-month process just to figure out if people are inclined or are willing to do this type of supplemental to their property tax bill, something that they have to vote for. It's a very rigorous process for creating this. July and August, we'd be sending out a survey to all the property owners, and we would then get the parcel map. They would give us what the boundaries for research are. And then we would code the supportive people conceptually in green; people that were opposed would be in red; people that had no opinion would be yellow, and any public parcels would be orange. be orange. And we'd go over that with the steering committee, including city representatives, to show what is our inclination of support. What I always try to look at is that we have 30% support by property owners in the form of linear frontage, lot size, and building square footage. Why? Because in other states, you can use assess valuation in order to determine whether or not there's support for a property assessment district. State of California, you cannot do that because of Prop 13. As you all know, if someone bought a property 40 years ago, they're paying X property taxes, and if they bought it last year, right next door, same lot, same frontage, same building square footage, they're probably paying eight times whatever their neighbor is paying. So you can't use property valuations. So you have to say, what does each property have in common? Linear frontage, lot size, and building square footage. And those are the key elements when you're making that determination of support. In August and September, we'll start to wrap it up, and if there's people, if there's large parcels that have not responded, then we'd do a second mailing, and we'd also ask the steering committee if anybody knows that property owner, even if it's an LLC or if it's a trust, and we would work to try to get them to respond one way or another. I would tell people to respond to the survey, even if they're opposed to it, so we know where everything stands. And so when we report back to the city council and city staff, they know that we've done our due diligence on this. And then I would write a report in September, present it to city managers while the city council, and say, this is what we found out. There's either support for it based upon my experience in doing this 98 times, or there's not support for it. But we would wrap it up, and then you would know how to proceed from there. So what I wanted to do is show you just a few things. Some of you who might have been to Little Italy, this is Little Italy starting in 2020.
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah.
Before you go through the pictures, can I ask a couple of questions?
Please.
Great initial presentation going into this. Many of us know our downtown, we've seen it. We, to my knowledge, we have a downtown district at the moment, right? We have some sort of downtown district. Can you recap for me again? What do you want to do? And what are you going to assess, and how much?
Your downtown district is generated from, if I'm, David, tell you.
Yeah, I'll help you. Okay, thank you. The current district downtown generates about $30,000 a year. So the purpose of this work that we're seeking direction on tonight is to allow us to do a feasibility study essentially on creating a new district under a different set of parameters than what currently exists. The district that was created here is under 1965 law, it was created in 1971. This is an opportunity to create something new, something, you know, more modern, and also something, again, particularly, as Marco said, and this speaks to my work, too. Now, I did this, obviously, in Pennsylvania, laws are a little different, but similar approach. You want this to be property owner-driven, because at the end of the day, they're the ones who are going to pay, but they're also the ones who benefit from it. So this is a chance now, as we've just completed the Streetscape investment, we've seen a flurry of new businesses coming in over the last two years or so, since the pandemic restrictions ended, we know there's more on the way, to bring together those stakeholders and, you know, discuss what are the things they want to see to keep prosperity happening downtown, and what are they willing to pay for? When I did this work in Pennsylvania, it was very simplistic when you first have that conversation. It's the old, you know, for the price of a cup of coffee a day, or two cups of coffee a day, what do you want for that? What could you get for that?
Got it. One more, just, so the current district gets in $30,000 a year?
That's correct.
Got it. Can you just recap what other, what are the problems with the current district besides that?
Well, so there's not necessarily a problem, it's just a lack of revenue and resources to make further investments. So right now, that money is stretched pretty thin between the downtown portering service, it pays part of the salary for the downtown coordinator that we contract with, and that's pretty much about it.
Got it. And as I say, sales tax on all goods or just on?
No, it's, it's, oh, sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, I think one of the limitations, I don't think it's a problem with the current district, it's the PBIA, Parking and Business Improvement Area. One of the limitations is that it's on the, it's basically an add-on to the business license. And so you have tenants in the buildings that are the ones pulling the business license, not the property owners that are the ones that own the properties. And so the, I think a fundamental difference here is, instead of it being some amount of money that's placed onto the business license for the tenant of the building, it's the property owner of the building reinvesting into downtown in order to see the type of improvements that they want to see.
So this entire assessment is specifically only for property owners?
Correct.
Is that correct? All right, thank you.
And let me add that the people of California adopted Proposition 218 in 1996. Prop 218 is pretty clear on what, you cannot assess people and you're providing, unless you're providing special benefit, must be certified by an assessment engineer, and it's got a rigorous process for balloting of the property owners. And the property owner's balloting, as well as their petition, is determined by how much they pay into the district. So if I'm paying $1,000 and David's paying $2,000, he has twice the vote that I do. That's dictated by the state constitution. The great thing, too, is there's almost no exemptions in a property assessment district. Doesn't matter if you're tax-exempt, it doesn't matter if you're public, private, commercial, whatever, residential. The only way, the only restrictions under the Property Business Improvement District Act is if it's agricultural land, which you don't have in downtown, or if it's residentially zoned. And most downtowns by now have mixed-use zoning all throughout the state of California. Did you have another question, too?
Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask, am I allowed to ask a question?
Are you with him? You're not.
Yeah, I was just.
Okay, we're going to have public questions in a bit, so did.
I just want to, I'm ready to start asking questions.
Okay, I want to finish up so we can ask you some questions.
Yeah, this is picture show, so. I'm just showing you a few before and after staff asked that I showed this. This is what it turned into. Again, this is what it looked like, and this is what it turned into. All this happened in the course of about eight years, right before the 2008 recession. This was the entryway into Little Italy looking north from downtown San Diego, and this is what it looks like now. This was almost the heart of the community, it's just a lot of bad palm trees and, you know, curb cuts, 100-year-old sidewalks. This is what it turned into in the course of a few years. Same thing, this was the entryway into Little Italy, the first entryway. That became this, which we worked with the developer and built that piazza on the corner as an entryway piazza into Little Italy, and that was the basis for us creating a lot of them. The key test in business districts that I've worked in is if young women feel comfortable in an area, particularly if a young woman with children feel comfortable, then you have a lot of success. You'll see the emphasis that we put in wheelbarrows, landscaping, et cetera, because people love that type of color. This was the heart of our district, and this is, you can see, the only thing we had was a bus stop and news racks. This was 2020. And then we started to enhance it a little bit, and then that street became a piazza. We vacated that street, it's 10,000 square feet, it's technically a public park, but the City, Little Italy Association of 501(c)(3) is the one that actually manages that district. We have the Marine Band because MCRD is right next to Little Italy, and we've paid tribute through Piazza Barcelona, which is a dedication to the most decorated Italian-American marine in history. And we do a lot of things with Marine, and they give this free concert every summer in August. This was our Christmas tree lighting, we had about 40,000 people there that day, and it's all based upon social media and the fact that people love getting together. And this was the first time we did this after COVID. And we can also decorate our piazza. We're not professionals on this, we just sort of made this up as we went along. So all this is just stuff that we put together, and we have a sign, just like you do. Ours is a Little Italy sign, and it's tied to the fishing industry. So that's sort of the 25 years in Little Italy and about 25 seconds, so that's where we are. So now I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, do you want to let the public speak first? Okay, we have a public comment?
I don't have a card. Did you want to fill out?
I was not prepared for that, that's why I didn't record, I didn't know that. Is that okay for me to ask a question?
Sure, step up to the mic.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your presentation, it's marvelous. I'm city resident, I'm Deanna Morad, and I really look forward to renovation and improvement. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Have your mic on, ma'am?
Oh, yes, it's wonderful, thank you very much. So the question is, you've indicated that you're proposing to solicit the property owners. So what is the anticipated percentage that would motivate you to proceed? Let's say we have 100% of owners and only, let's say, 30 reply to that. Would you proceed with this proposal, or would you?
No, what I'm saying, every owner is different. Some might have a lot of frontage because they're on a corner, some might have a much larger building, two to three stories versus one. So I look at 30% of the frontage response, 30% of the lot size response, and 30% of the building square footage response. In my experience, that's what says there's a good group, because all you have to do then is, under the Property Business Improvement District, you have to have 50% of the property owners by dollar amount sign a petition just to get to the ballot.
Okay.
And if you're at 49.8%, you'll never get to a ballot, you'll never form the district.
Correct.
So it's a pretty high threshold, and then after that, the balloting is based upon whoever returns their ballot. There's no minimum threshold for a return of property owner ballots.
Okay, and I hope you have a Plan B, because I would have loved to see that in case we don't have a positive reply from the owners.
I would make those recommendations if there wasn't support, so.
Okay, good. And another question I have, real quick. I've noticed you presented a little building there in the corner, in Little Italy in San Diego, and you've, you've, the following picture was showing the beautiful development and a lot of people, high-rise, mid-rise buildings. So my question is, you have one owner with a little building, how you were able to achieve that success with just one building? Let's say the building owner agreed to be part of this program.
Well, they have smaller frontage, smaller lot size, and a smaller building, so they're going to pay less than somebody that might be next door to them.
Okay.
They all understood that Little Italy was going nowhere in 1994 and 1995.
Okay.
It was the tuna capital of the world, and it lost that status in the early 1970s, because tuna do not swim with dolphins in the Western Pacific, but they do in the Eastern Pacific. So because of that, all the tuna saners and all the canneries had to go to Thailand, Thailand and Taiwan to stay with the fishing industry. That was the first devastation. The second one was, as is typical, I think that, not Caltrans per se, but the Federal Highway Administration would look at Little Italy's and downtowns and run freeways through them, because we lost 3,000 homes when Interstate 5 went through. So there were two major body blows, and it was just a remnant. If it wasn't for Our Lady of the Rosary Church, which is a Catholic, national Italian Catholic church, there would have been nothing left, but they stayed with it. They're on our board, we meet in their hall, so we're very close with everybody in the community.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't have any speaker cards.
Okay, all right. We'll come back to the council for questions. Councilman Thompson.
Oh, yeah.
Imagine that.
I'll try and keep it short. I like, I like the thing, so my colleagues know this, but I was the president of the Main Street Association for a number of years, so we've looked at P bids for many times. We thought we were going to be saved by redevelopment, that got taken away, blah, blah, blah. So just quickly, are you forming a nonprofit if you get 50% plus one? And you form this district, and the district pulls in, the city pulls in these bigger employers that are going to put us over the 50%? Do you, do you then form a nonprofit?
Yes, so the normal process is plan, petition, ballot.
Good.
And then after the balloting, I always tell people, do not create a corporation unless you have an approved district, because otherwise you have a car with no gas, for all intensive purposes, the vehicle being the corporation, the gas being the assessments. So we formed probably 50 to 60 501(c)(3)'s, charitable organizations, public benefit nonprofit corporations, and then set them up. I just finished one in Manteca and one in downtown Santa Barbara, because they successfully formed the district, they choose their own officers, they choose their own staff, et cetera.
And then you can form it any way you want, the district itself, in your, talking to the business owners, which we have a lot of non-California, a lot of absentee owners. Will you go through the business owner to get to the owner, or will you go directly to the owner? What is the?
We have, when we invite people to the first meeting, I'm assuming that a lot of the significant businesses will be present, and I'll say the same thing. It's important, if you think this is a good idea, talk to your landlord.
And if, and if they don't vote, then we're only counting 50 plus one have voted?
Right, remember, in the balloting, there's no minimum turnout, so.
Right, right, right. So is it still in five-year increments?
The P bid is, first term is five years, every term after that is 10 years.
So what has happened, colleagues, in the past, when we, when we looked at this, when FMSA looked at this, it was, they were passing by 51, 52, 53%, and then at that five-year mark, they're getting 85, 90%. It's just, it just really takes off to where the people end up embracing the owners. It, they, because it, because it turns into things like this. I'll just be really quick now, because I'm totally want to go to the next step. Do you have any homeless, I don't want to say solutions, but is bringing more people going to, or a higher density going to, what has been your experience in that?
Well, when we decided to start building public spaces, we had that challenge, because you don't want a lot of the homeless people. San Diego's got a homeless problem, not so much in Little Italy, because there's so much activity going on on the sidewalks and the piazas and everything. Plus, we teach our maintenance guys, ask them their name, treat them like humans, because they are humans. Maybe they fell off, you know, two years ago, they had drug addiction or something. We also hire a group called the Rescue Mission, who goes out every morning from 6:00 to noon, and they interact with them. And through the Rescue Mission, we were able to get eight longtime people that were living somewhere in Little Italy.
Is that in collaboration with PD and/or with the Home Services?
The captain and chief are really good friends, and they were very, very close to PD, yes.
And that's about it. I have several other questions, but if, if the, if my colleagues want to move this on to the next step, just my last question is, if it, if it comes to fruition, is the cost to the building/business owner, if it's one and the same, on a tax bill?
Yes, it's on the property tax bill, because the compliance rate is much higher
Correct.
than it would be if it was on the business tax.
And then you determine it by, the Board of Directors determines what is a fee, because they're talking clean and safe streets, they're talking security, they're talking, I mean, it's a, it's a game changer if it passes, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Doug?
Yeah, I just was wondering, from out of town, I'm old Fairfield, I've been here my whole life. What do you think of our downtown?
I think it's, some are grids and some are linear corridors. You have a linear corridor, and it's really walkable, and it's attractive. And with the new sidewalks, I think it makes it even more attractive. You know, if there's a parking problem, I'm sure people can actually park in front of the county, or use some of the county lots or something, and walk into downtown. So you've got all the elements, I think, to make it work. You know, on those five points, the one element that I think is missing is point two and three, you have the place, but you don't have sustainable revenues, and you don't have a management corporation to use those revenues to promote the place. The politics and timing seems good, and I'd say, then it's a question of having whoever you hired or managed the district stay abreast of everything, because post-COVID is not pre-COVID. And I think we have to look at our downtowns completely differently than we did in 2019.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else with questions? Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, mayor. To me, this is exciting, but I'm wondering, and maybe this is more of a question for Councilman Thompson, because I know he has his finger on a pulse down there. But really, what, what, what type of pulse check are we having, are we having from the businesses down, down there about this downtown?
So the city manager and I have actually been having these conversations for years now, at least two or three years, and there's reluctance in the beginning, but then when these business owners, and there's four or five downtown that are on board, once they start seeing, you know, which, which new city will, will show them, here's, here's the improvements, here's what you can expect, and it's not as much as you would think, depending on the amount of property owners should get involved. So if we bring the city in, it's a bunch of votes, so. But the, now the response is turning positive with your friends coming down there, you know? You do, with T and with Lisa coming down there, and, you know, the momentum is starting to build, and like Zeller said, was, there's these new business, there's a new vibe down there, so it's, it's exciting.
And I do feel a vibe down there.
Yes, Councilman Doug?
Did you have a roast beef sandwich at Joe's?
I did not, but I will next time, so.
Shame on you, sir. Councilwoman Pandora.
Thank you, I'm really excited as well. I was also born and raised here, and I've seen the, the pictures of how it was before, and then I was changed when I would drive through. And then I was changed when I would drive through, I used to go to this elementary school down the street. So we'd drive through there every single day and now I work in the courthouse with Doug. And it's always great to see folks down there. And I really appreciate when, in here where it says cultivate a strong positive image when people hear the word downtown Fairfield.
Right, that's critical.
Because right now, that's a lot of times not the case. And a lot of it, I think, has to do, and I've talked about this often, not just with downtown, but with like other areas in the city where it's up to us to change the narrative of how we speak about our own city. But then also, we need also the assistance of programs like this so that we can point to stuff that's going on and say, this is why this narrative needs to change.
Right.
And so I appreciate like all of this. And I just, my, I think my one question was just, have you worked with cities where we have a county jail in our downtown? Because I think that's one of the issues too, where we have not only like the homeless walking through, but then we also have people being released in the middle of the day. And so we do see a lot of, I think, extra folks walking around that are being released or that a lot of cities don't have, have to worry about.
Right, and I think that you guys know and I witnessed all this, you know, the concerned employees have about, you know, surviving. San Diego's got a quarter billion dollar deficit and LA's got a billion dollar deficit. San Francisco's 800 million over the next two years. So, because the ARPA money, as you well know, ran out. And so I think we have to look at things in a different way in terms of the way we're going to prioritize certain areas of the city. I would say that Little Italy contributes well more in sales tax and hotel tax revenues than what it gets back from the city of San Diego, which is what you want. You want to activate that core area that can generate a lot more sales tax revenue. And, you know, in my experience too, there's been, content and form is really critical. So what I mean by that is when I drive down the street and I look at all the buildings and I look at the way downtown is laid out and the corners and things like that, that's the form. The content's going to change because I think as more people want to come downtown, new retail is going to have new demand on new restaurants. And you create a critical demand of restaurants and at that point drives people, because people are always driven by food. I never use the term clean and safe because malls are clean and safe, but I think they're really boring too. So I always say, you know, it's dynamic density. And also I don't like clean and safe because it's, the opposite is dirty and dangerous. So it just doesn't, you know, it doesn't fly really well. But you have great form, now it's a question of filling the content. One of the, I did a lot of work in Oakland and it's a great store and I think one of the best restaurants. Opened about 10 years ago. There was a place called Boot and Shoe that they fixed shoes, boots, things like that, for years, decades. Had the neon sign. And then it was on Grand Boulevard, or Grand Avenue in Oakland. Somebody opened up a bar, left a sign called Boot and Shoe. In Little Italy, there was a place called Iron Works and they made iron bars for windows. And then when the new owner took over, he called it Iron Works. And it's now a great bar and restaurant. So that's what I mean by the form and you're just changing the content and the content is driving more people into your downtown. And as you had stated too, if you have a neutral image or a bad image, they're kind of the same to me because it means it doesn't drive people to go there. So you want people, particularly in your community, and I know it's only about, I think, 40 square miles or 20 square miles. You want to look at your market as 20, radius of 20 miles and try to bring people into your downtown. So you're getting the sales tax revenue for other people because you don't want the leakage going to other areas, you want it coming back here.
Any, anything else? No? All right, then we've already heard from the public, so I'll go ahead. And Councilman Thompson, did you, yep, make that motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Item K2, City Council Fiscal Year 2025 to 2027 Strategic Goals and Priorities. And our presenter is City Manager David Gassaway.
Yeah, good evening, Council, Mayor. So I will be brief, walking through your council goals and priorities. So in going back now a few years, in February 2023, as you'll all remember, we had a council retreat where you guys had your strategic goal setting. At that time, council really set the current mission, vision and values that we have carried forward for the past few years. The workshop is always established, intended to establish clear intentions for what we focus on and what the priorities are for the organization and how we can most efficiently allocate our time and our resources to achieve the objectives that are identified. In this past council retreat in January, we are coming into a new two-year cycle. And so at the retreat, one of the big things that the city council identified was a change from downtown development. So one of, one of the six goals that the county has, or I mean, the council had identified previously was downtown development. And instead, the city council talked a lot about expanding that and talking more about economic development with a focus on other, other opportunity areas, certainly North Texas, the mall area. And so that is from a council goal perspective, one of the predominant changes. There was also conversation at the council retreat about potentially removing organizational excellence. I've spoken with each of you individually after that council retreat. You know, we have our senior leadership team retreat where we sort of work in identifying how it is that we're going to deliver on your goals and objectives that are identified. And it was, it was brought up by a variety of staff members, different perspectives. Because there are objectives that we are actively working on that are carrying forward from this last plan into this next two-year plan, there was a strong sense from employee folks that organizational excellence really represented some of the internal service side of things. So I am here tonight recommending that we keep that as one of the goals because certainly a lot of the initiatives that fall under that will be continuing forward. As, as I go over, you know, we use this chart every year as we kick off the goal-setting session. And we've maintained those same goals. Council has talked about new objectives and then we, the staff level, identify the strategies and tactics that we believe will get us to success on those objectives. And, yeah, so at your retreat, we mostly talked about objectives. In the goals document that is in your agenda packet, it identifies what those objectives are. And this year, in the past two years, in the document itself, we've just had the objectives. And then in the quarterly updates that go on to the transparency portal, which I'll cover here in a second, we get into more of the depth, going into some of those strategies and tactics, what the deadlines or what the timelines are and all of that. In this new document this year, we've also identified the strategies and those objectives just on the high level. So since that study session, as I mentioned, we've evaluated our resources, obviously, as we know and have had, you know, many conversations about where our financial position is right now. We really evaluated what we believed we were able to deliver on within those objectives and the strategies identified within the financial resources available to us. At your next meeting, you're going to, you're going to see the budget, right? So this is a cycle, the reason I said we're moving into a two-year, a new two-year plan is because it aligns then with the budget document. We do biennial budgeting, so two-year budgets. And so we align the council goal-setting process with that two-year budget so that we're aligning the goals over that two-year period. We are, will remain committed with this new goal document to doing the quarterly updates, putting things on to our transparency portal. Every quarter, we've been publishing a report that goes into depth there in talking about what we've, you know, status updates, where we're at, anything that's been achieved. For this past two-year document, as we've mentioned a couple of times, I think back at the, the, sorry, State of the City Breakfast, you know, we had originally showed where we were at. Knowing a little bit more now, as of the quarter that ended in March, the great news is that we have 123 of the different strategies that the council had identified for the last two-year are complete. But more importantly, about 96% of them are either complete or on target for completion this year. So 140 activities have been completed and ongoing, 73 activities are going to be carrying over. So some of these things that were identified have begun, but will need multiple years. For example, just throwing one out there, you know, the soccer complex was a conversation. Some of those types of projects certainly take multiple years in order for us to advance. So a lot of those will carry forward into this new document. All current items with, with status of canceled, ongoing activities or completed will not be carried over. And then new, new items will be shown in the new document, once we have that up on the transparency portal. So the document that's in your agenda report is sort of just a summary. And then on the transparency portal, utilizing our, our software system, that's where we really get that full breakdown and the depth into reporting on everything that's there. Some of the key changes, as I mentioned earlier, changed downtown development to the economic development. The objectives narrowed down just a little bit. We had 23 objectives, there's going to be 19 in this new document. And then a few less strategies. And there are quite a bit of, there's a number of items, I don't know the number directly off the top of my head, but there are things that were sort of started as initiatives, but they've now become things that we're just going to do on a regular basis as a part of our operations. So some of those items have come off of the council goal-setting documentation and strategic planning for that reason as they've now become a part of our standard operations. And then majority of the stuff that we've completed were in organizational excellence and quality of life. Just a quick update, again, as we're transitioning to much more transparency with the information, reporting on things that we're doing. We've already completed a number of things with our transparency portal. Everything that's over there on that left column are things that we will update quarterly. Projects like capital improvement projects and our development projects. Now that we've added that module into the, into the GIS mapping, we'll be updating that quarterly. We are working on a few additional dashboards so that we can be tracking and demonstrating progress on things related to homelessness, parks and rec amenities. So we're, we're creating a map there where you'll be able to go onto the map, zoom into any, any park in the city and see, okay, you know, where are their park benches? Are there pergolas? What, what type of amenities are within that park? And you'll have a listing of all of that stuff. We're also working to get all of our fire and medical. We got our police information up there here in this last year. Now we're moving over into the fire medical side and of course, performance metrics that are in the budget. So those are dashboards and modules that we're working on currently. And then in the future, we have the plan to get all of our budget information, open budgeting, open checkbooking. So, or open checkbook where, you know, anybody can go in, they can dive down into the funds, see where the money is being allocated, where it's being spent. With that, that's my presentation, happy to take any questions or have any discussion with the council on the goals document that's in your agenda packet.
Do we have any public speakers on this?
I do not. Did anyone wish to speak on this item? No?
No. Anything from? Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager. Sorry, I'm navigating with going all digital. And it's a little wonky. I have two questions. One, I wanted to comment on re-adding organizational excellence. I completely agree that we should keep that. You know, it's not. What's interesting about, you know, third year here in city council and meeting so many of the staff and employees and department leaders. It feels like to me organizational excellence is more of a mantra. And I really appreciate that as a business owner with employees. And to take that away, it kind of pinched me when we did it. And then to hear you talking about it and to say that staff came back and said, we want to keep that, we should keep it. So that was one. And then the other question that I wanted to ask was about the transparency portal, which blows me away. I'm so impressed by it and the work that we do and how easy it is to access it. And so my question is surrounding, and it, well, so my, my question is, I've always wanted to be able to understand what was happening district by district. Is there any layering of any of the dashboards where we could see by district calls for service or what's happening in a district, just to kind of compare it and see where there's areas of concern or areas that are doing exceptionally well? And we can kind of point to why that is and be able to replicate it in other places?
Yeah, I, we're not quite there. You know, within, within the GIS system, you can turn layers on and off. And so I would have to double check, I don't know off the top of my head, if you went into say the, you know, the police data and looked at the map on where those calls for service are. If, if within there, that layer is able to be turned on by district. Where, where we want to get to is where all that stuff's in there. So, you know, you have your police, you have code enforcement information, you have fire, medical, all those types of things. On the backend, then it's utilizing that information to make informed decisions about how it is that we're deploying, you know, city resources and city services. So in terms of knowing everything that's going on, I, I mean, I would want to have more of an offline conversation. Certainly the calls for service data, anything that we have that's, that's geo, you know, located, that we are moving towards that. And that's where, you know, this, this fire and medical information is, is moving us in that direction. You know, capital improvement projects and, and the different development projects that are going on. Again, it's all, all through the GIS module, through ArcGIS. And so, you know, with the different ways that we have people looking at it or cutting that information, that can then be filtered by district. I don't think we have it set up at this point in time because we're really trying to highlight, here's everything going on in the city. But if that's something that council wants to discuss, then again, it's just about turning on or off the, the layer that allows you to, to, you know, view it in that way. I'm sure there's a lot more technical requirements to doing that, that I don't know, but I know there's ways to do that.
Anything else, colleagues? I had a couple of things, then. On page four of 11, we talk about our values and we have communication, diversity, inclusion, innovation, transparency. I think one of the values that we talk about a lot, but we haven't put it down, is safety. I see it as a value and I see it as something that the city should stand on. And I'd like to add that to, to that. Unless anybody has objection to safety as one? No? So if we could add that?
Yeah, of course, if the council wants to do that, that's not a problem at all. It, I, I see what you're getting at there. Because I was going to say, because in the vision, it's, you know, it includes that safe, but yeah.
Yeah, right.
Just the value of safety.
And then just one other thing on page nine of 11, under housing. Everything here except for one line, or maybe two lines, is all about very affordable housing. And I don't think Fairfield wants to be just seen as, and this is how we're seeing now, which is why we, because we are the most affordable, the county. We don't want to just be seen as the affordable housing place because that puts us in a, a spot where we're not going to grow our downtown. We, we want to have affordable housing, we want to have all layers of housing. So I'd like to see something in there about. all layers of housing. So I'd like to see something in there about, you know, we do talk about some diversity in housing in one spot here, but we need executive housing, especially if we're going to grow and go into, you know, more expensive things around here. We're going to need executives. We don't have that much executive housing right now. And also workforce housing. So the people who come to work for the PDE, nurses, those people, I think those things need to be included in there. And that's my suggestion on that. It does talk about develop or preserve mixed income and affordable housing, but all the underlying things really are target of affordability. So I think Fairfield needs to step it up. We need to be, we need to talk and focus on what we really want. So we want all layers of housing, I think. Well, I know, that's what I would like, but I don't know. Yeah.
How, what would that look like, David? I mean, is it any, I mean, what she's saying makes sense. Does there any way to add it in there? Or is it combined with?
Yeah, within the language under the housing goal, we can certainly, you know, wordsmith something and get in there to the to the, you know, sort of the intent of what the mayor just raised in terms of the the full spectrum of housing, not just really focused on the.
And I don't disagree with that, Cat. I think that there's some big businesses coming to this town that are going to need executive housing.
We we will, and more workforce housing, too. All right. That's all I had then. So anything else? Nothing at all? Then I will entertain a motion on this. I'll move it. And Scott's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. With those changes, okay? And now we'll move on to public hearings.
Public hearings, item L one, public hearing regarding vacancies for calendar year 2024. Recruitment and retention efforts for calendar year 2024 as required under Assembly Bill two five six one, Government Code Section three five zero two point three regarding vacancies. And our presenter is Angela Broaddus, Human Resources Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Angela Broaddus, Human Resources Manager for HR Department's Recruitment and Operations Division. This public hearing and presentation from staff satisfies our obligations under AB twenty-five sixty-one, new assembly bill which took effect January first of this year. The legislature recognized the high, the impact that high vacancy rates have on local government positions, affecting service delivery and employee well-being. And so this assembly bill seeks to promote transparency and collaboration between public agencies and our employee labor organizations. We are obligated to present information during a public hearing once per fiscal year prior to the adoption of the final budget. And we report out on the status of our vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and identifying any potential changes to policies or procedures and recruitment activities that may present obstacles in our hiring process. If the vacancy ratings for any one labor union is at or above twenty percent, there are additional reporting requirements. I'm happy or relieved that we are well below that threshold for each of our associations. So we are reporting for calendar year 2024. So for all of our bargaining units, the average number of vacancies was six point four percent. When we asked some of our comparable agencies for their information and sharing ours in exchange, we saw an average of about eleven point two percent. So I think we're, we're doing pretty well here.
Now, okay, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Did anyone wish to speak? I don't have any.
No, I'm sorry. The law says that she has to present it during the public hearing. So I just advise the mayor to open the public hearing so she can make the presentation during the hearing.
I don't want to start over, do I?
No, you don't need to start over.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. So looking at each bargaining, represented bargaining unit individually, for our Fairfield Employees Association, we had an annual vacancy percentage of six point one percent. For General Managers Association, also six point one percent. Our Police Officers Association, seven point four percent. I'm very happy to report that both our fire associations, including management, and our Police Management Association had a zero percent vacancy rating. While not required under AB twenty-five sixty-one, I've also included our nonrepresented So here's a very simplified overview of our recruitment process, beginning with the department's identification of their need, so seeing where they have a vacant position that they wish to fill, and the various milestones leading up to that selected individual being on boarded with their department and ready to serve the Fairfield community. So our team is always looking for ways that we can reduce the time between each milestone. And last year, we created a robust hiring guide to help our hiring managers and support staff throughout the departments, to help make sure that we develop timelines and have an understanding of each milestone, and how each person's piece of the puzzle can help expedite the recruitment and get our employees on boarded as quickly as possible. So for calendar year 2024, our average time to fill vacancies, meaning from the day the position was vacant to the date that it was filled, was one hundred and thirty-eight calendar years, calendar days, excuse me.
Ooh.
We filled a total of one hundred and seventeen vacancies. We filled thirty-one of those through existing eligibility lists, which is a good way to fast track onboarding when we don't have to run a specific recruitment. We can pull from an existing list and move that person through the pre-employment process quicker. Forty-three of our one hundred and seventeen vacancies were filled through open recruitments, which is open to both existing city employees and external candidates. And also, just happened that way, forty-three were filled through internal-only recruitments, meaning promotion opportunities for existing So in calendar year 2024, both our HR department and our departments throughout the city were very active in recruitment and retention efforts. I do want to acknowledge specifically three people in our HR department, Vanessa, Amber, and Leslie. These three ladies, in addition to doing many other functional areas, personally screened over four thousand applications and helped fill those one hundred and seventeen vacancies. Of course, it takes our entire human resources team, many of whom are here today, to retain the employees that we we work hard to recruit. So we coordinate with our marketing and outreach division to work on advertising, both on locally through social media, on our billboards. We did a campaign on the local buses. Our fleet department helped us to put bumper stickers on all city fleet vehicles. We've got mobile advertising every day. And posting through our departments, we help identify industry-specific job boards to really target our recruitment efforts. Our police department got certified through Post to be a host for pellet B and physical agility testing. So we were able to bring that in-house, which helps the candidates, you know, get through that process quicker. We can help build relationships with them from day one as a candidate. Likewise, we participate in local job fairs and speaking engagements. I know many departments also do that, speaking at our local schools, people speak to their colleges, to help entice people into public service. We also have a few recruitment and retention incentives. Administrative policy allows, with city manager approval, departments to offer greater than step one of our five-step salary range. And for some classifications, we accept substitutions for education. Perhaps that's prior military experience or substituting experience for years of education. And in a few of the bargaining units, there are sign-on bonuses and options for vacation reciprocity. So looking at some of our retention statistics, the number of vacancies that were created, meaning the the number of positions that people left, was a hundred and two last calendar year. So I'm happy that we filled more than we created, but I would like to see a bigger gap in between those those two numbers. We had annual turnover rate of eight percent, and that's the rate at which city employees leave service and are replaced by new hires. And there's obviously several different reasons why why vacancies occur. The majority of our vacancies were from internal and promotional opportunities, about thirty percent if you also add in flexibly staffed positions, retirements at twenty-four percent. And, you know, that's something that we want to see. We want to see our employees staying here for their whole career. And then thirty-four percent was for voluntary separation, a variety of reasons. For those who completed our voluntary exit survey, we saw career advancement, career growth, increased salary and benefits, personal reasons, and relocation. So looking at some of the obstacles and opportunities, often the needs of departments outpace HR's capacity. And we are always looking to reassess our staffing model, rebalancing our workloads and priorities to help departments move their their recruitment needs forward as quickly as possible. We identify some limited candidate pools for specialized roles, vehicle mechanics, for example, civil engineers. Testing can often be a barrier to entry, you know, compared to private sector. That's something somewhat unique to to public service. Same for our lengthy pre-employment and background process. That's a step that really doesn't happen in the private sector, but given all that the city employees are entrusted with, you know, that's a very necessary item. And certainly, market competition. Candidates are increasingly prioritizing work-life balance and all of the various needs for themselves and their families, and really look to see employers that that fit their needs. Looking at these as opportunities, certainly reassessing our staffing model and making sure that we prioritize recruitment for the agency. Simplifying our job postings, I know they can often be pretty overwhelming and intimidating when people log on and see a four-page posting. So my team has been working to really condense those and get the most critical information out to the candidates so we don't lose their attention. Creating job seeker-friendly testing processes during shelter at home, we moved away from the in-person testing with the Scantron forms. We've moved that to an online format, which allows candidates to test at a time that's more convenient for them. They don't have to take off work from their existing job to do that. Streamlining our processes, we are always listening to our departments and finding ways that we can reduce the time in all of those hiring milestones. We've begun using delivered functionality in the applicant tracking system to automate reference checks, saving time from the hiring managers having to make all those phone calls. We began using DocuSign for the conditional job offers, and we found that we hear back from our candidates accepting the position a lot quicker since they don't have to print and find a scanner. And likewise, as we talked about organizational excellence with our council goals, we are always looking to become a destination employer through competitive recruitment and evolving our practices with candidate preferences and labor dynamics in our our local region. I would be remiss if I didn't use this as an opportunity to plug that, yes, we are hiring. For anyone watching, you can scan our QR code or visit fairfield.ca.gov/jobs. And that concludes our required AB twenty-five sixty-one presentation. I welcome your questions and continue conversation around vacancies, recruitment, and retention at the city.
So I do have the public hearing open. And are there any public speakers?
I don't have any cards. Did anyone wish to speak? No, and no one's on lines.
All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any discussion, comments, questions?
Just like to say thank you.
All right, then. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right, that was unanimous. Thank you. It was informational. We voted anyway, because we liked it so much. All right. Yeah, we've got two more.
Okay, our next item, L two, Resolution twenty-two-five dash one zero two, Police Department Parking Fee Schedule, adding an additional section to the parking fee schedule and adopting the current parking fee schedule. And our presenter is Police Sergeant Robert Pierrot.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Robert Pierrot, and I'm the Traffic Sergeant for the Fairfield Police Department. So I'm here tonight presenting a new parking violation that was added to the California Vehicle Code at the beginning of this year. I will presenting the new section and asking the city council to approve adding it to the current parking fee schedule, as well as adopting and approving our current parking fee schedule with this newly added section. To give some history on our parking fee schedule here in the city of Fairfield, in nineteen ninety-three, Assembly Bill four oh eight decriminalized parking citations and removed the parking citation processing from the court's effective July first of ninety-three, thereby making standing our parking citations a civil offense. On July twentieth of nineteen ninety-three, a parking fee was created into a resolution and passed by the city council. The new section that we want to add to the parking fee schedule is California Vehicle Code, Section twenty-two five hundred N. Essentially, the background on this section is on October tenth of twenty twenty-three, the governor approved AB four thirteen, also known as the California Daylighting Bill. AB four thirteen added a new section, subsection of the California Vehicle Code of twenty-two five hundred. This section reads prohibits the stopping, standing, or parking of a vehicle within twenty feet of a vehicle approach side of any unmarked or marked crosswalk, or fifteen feet of any crosswalk where a curb extension is present. Effective January first of this year, twenty twenty-five, vehicles who are in violation of this section can be issued a parking citation. So why was this added to the California Vehicle Code? It was added to help increase visibility for pedestrians and drivers at crosswalks in hope to reduce the amount of vehicle versus So to understand this section, I'll kind of break it down of what unmarked crosswalk is, what the marked crosswalk is, and then as well as the curb extensions. So an unmarked crosswalk defined as being any pathway between street corners or between a street corner and a sidewalk, only if there are curb ramps on both sides. So the twenty feet will be measured from the curb return. Here's an image of a intersection within our city. As you can see, there's no lines on the roadway that indicate a marked crosswalk. So we have to determine whether or not a unmarked crosswalk is present here. Here we have two street corners across from each other, which would indicate an unmarked crosswalk where the blue hash lines are. So the no parking would be in the vehicle approach side. It would be twenty feet back from the intersection, essentially, one car length. Again, this is another image showing unmarked crosswalks at an intersection. And here you have unmarked crosswalks in four different ways, because you have street corners all across from each other. And again, where the red is highlighted on the curb, that is going to be the vehicle approach side, and the twenty feet will be measured from the crosswalk back towards or away from the intersection. Marked crosswalks are easier. The lines are painted in the roadway to help drivers and pedestrians determine where the actual crosswalk is. And in summary, the measurement is going to start at the crosswalk line that is closest to the vehicle approaching, and then measure back twenty feet, again, only on the vehicle approach side, which will be in the red indicated here. To go over the curb extensions, we have several of these now on East Tabor. This image is from East Tabor and Manor intersection. And the areas highlighted in yellow indicate the curb extensions. So the only difference here is the measurement is now fifteen feet as opposed to twenty, but it's still the same vehicle approach side, which is going to be where the red highlighter area are. So the proposed fine amount for the twenty-two five hundred N of the California Vehicle Code is fifty. So the proposed fine amount for the 22-500N of the California Vehicle Code is $58, and we are basing this amount off of similar sections in the 22-500 that has already been approved and that's currently already on our parking fee schedule, sections A, B, E, F, H, and I. This is our current parking fee schedule with the fine amounts attached with the newly-added section 22-500N. That concludes the presentation, and I can answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I do not. Did anyone wish to speak on this item?
I just have a question.
Yes.
The governor's law really makes sense in a large city like San Francisco, Los Angeles, or similar, Sacramento, but in a city like ours, Fairfield, which we barely see any pedestrians, does it truly make sense to do that?
The city of Fairfield, believe it or not, has a lot of vehicle versus pedestrian crashes. The public may not hear about all of them, but as the traffic sergeant, I see every single crash report that comes in, and there are a lot of vehicle versus pedestrian crashes, which also include children in school zones. So we're hoping, if we implement this and start enforcing it, that we can increase drivers' visibility and awareness approaching those crosswalks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other speakers?
No.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Councilman Tonison.
Sergeant, who's going to enforce it? Is it just going to be everyday cops on the street?
Yes, sir. So all police officers can enforce it, as well as community service officers and code enforcement officers.
Community services officers.
Yes.
Are we going to get another meter made? Is it going to affect the downtown?
I don't think so at this point. The objective is to have our PIO broadcast this information publicly to make the public know about it, because they may not know about the law, and then, obviously, then enforcing it once it's been made publicly. So to answer your question, as far as...
How long for warning? How long will warnings go? Couple months?
I would say probably a 30-day grace period of getting it out to the public and then enforcing it after that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I like that meter maid.
What was her name?
Come on, what was her name, Dan? Reba, that's right. Oh, yeah. Well, I loved her. You saw her coming.
We are, sir.
Oh, we miss Reba. Anyway, okay, I will entertain a motion then. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Oh, minus Manvier. He stepped away. Did he say easy yes?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. He gives it to us. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, our last item, L3, Ordinance 2025-04, Fire Department Hazard, Fire Hazard Severity Zones, adding Chapter 8B Fairfield Fire Hazard Severity Zones, recommended by the California State Fire Marshal. And our presenter is Stephen Conti, our Fire Marshal.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, esteemed members, council members. Here tonight to present our adoption of the new local fire hazard severity zone maps that are required by the California State Fire Marshal.
February 24th of this year, California State Fire Marshal released the new Fire Hazard Severity Zone maps. Mainly, this was accounting for all local responsibility areas that are in Fairfield and the surrounding state cities. These maps were done over a 50-year period, and the last time they were updated was in 2007 through 2011, so to say they're overdue is an understatement. Fairfield's required to adopt these maps for our local responsibility areas, LRA. Also, the purpose is to inform stakeholders about our adoption process and outline the implications for the community. What's the difference between SRA and LRA? SRA is state responsibility areas that the state has the financial responsibility for fire protection and prevention, and local responsibility are LRA, as you can see, includes incorporated cities such as ours, urban regions, ag lands, et cetera, that are required for financial responsibility for fire prevention and protection. The legal framework on these, California Government Code Sections 51178 mandates identification of the three types of zones, moderate, high, and very high. The good news here, as I'll go over here in a few minutes, is we only have moderate and high, no very high fire zones. Requires local government agencies to make zone information available for public comment and review, which we did, starting on February 24th on our city website. And then, lastly, it obligates local agencies to designate the ordinance within 120 days of receiving the California State Fire Marshal recommendations. Identify the fire hazards. How are the zones determined? So again, they're based on best available science and data by the California State Fire Marshal Planning Commission, subject matter experts to make it quick and easy for them. They were the experts that modeled these, and models evaluated probability of the area burning and potential fire behavior in the area. Factors include fire history, vegetation, flame length, blowing embers, proximity to wildland, terrain, and weather. Again, the three types of zone, very high, high, and moderate. Also, I want to add that they evaluate hazard, not risk. Insurance companies evaluate the risk. The maps are like a flood map. It's based on hazard. If you see above, the next slide shows our new updated map that shows that we have moderate and high zones in our city now. The areas basically in question are off of 680, the Dartmoor Red Top area, East Ridge, Rancho and Rolling Hills, and then along with Vanden and One Lake. What does that mean for us? The maps are, again, used for building standards, for new construction in the WUWE, what we call WUWE, Wildland Urban Interface Area. That's outlined in California Building Code, Chapter 7A. Those will be enforced starting July, or excuse me, January 1st of next year. Property development standards such as roadwists, water supply, signage, et cetera, defensible space requirements. We already have our 100-foot defensible space. I can't say enough, it was a wonderful job done by everyone yesterday, so thank you all for supporting that, because that was professionals at their best, and our department second to none.
Amen.
Natural hazard real estate disclosures. Again, if you sell your property, you just have to let the prospective buyer know if they're in that type of, what zone they're in. Key changes, inclusion of areas previously unclassified or underclassified. Previous to this new map, we had no zones at all in the city. Reflect current data and modeling techniques. Again, Fairfield's new fire hazard severity zones, and right, again, we only have moderate and high. Again, up on the screen, you show the difference outlined for SRA, state responsibility area. As you can see, those areas require pretty much all adoption codes, defensible space, et cetera. To the right is our LRA, and if you drop down under the, I guess, mildly orange, moderate section, you see that we do have high and under-high. What that requires us to, is what we're doing tonight, starting the adoption of the maps. Hazard disclosure, in any of those areas, we'll have to adopt Chapter 8, or 7A, excuse me, building construction methods. Moderate only requires us to adopt the maps. So working with our building official and other stakeholders in the city, we'll make sure that's provided and followed code, and we do what we're supposed to. For existing, any remodels in existing areas that fall under these new maps, ignition-resistant construction may be required. We'll take case by case, we'll be reasonable, financially responsible, and make sure in the end, everyone's safe. Implications for residents and developers, I kind of outlined that, the building codes, structures, and designated zones must comply with those specific building standards. Insurance considerations, insurance, they go the risk model, not the hazard model. Ricardo Lara, our insurance commissioner, stated that that will not affect insurance rates. So that's about all I could say on that one. Community safety, again, enhance awareness and preparedness for wildfire risks. Round-the-clock job, for sure. Adoption timeline, we made the maps available for public view. We met that. Comments were submitted approximately three, and then we're asking you to start tonight, council, to adopt in our first reading of this ordinance, along with the second reading on June 17th. The adoption must occur within 120 days of receiving the state fire marshal recommendations, which we're in line with. And lastly, ordinance and maps must be submitted to the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection within 30 days after complete adoption. That concludes my presentation. Below is also some websites that you can go to that spells out in-depth this adoption process, LRA maps, et cetera, and I'm open to any questions.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Public comment, any?
I do not have any speaker cards. Did anyone wish to speak on this item? No?
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion, questions, answers, comments.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 2025-04.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous, and so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one other thing, don't listen to people bad-mouthing y'all. I'll go down there and fight them for you.
Had an hour and a half-long conversation Sunday with them, so...
I bet you did.
It was a good one.
Good.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, you're the best. No, don't make me take my earrings off. Anyway, that's it, we're adjourned.